I'd like to have everybody's attention please, we'll get started. Caitlin, you'll call the roll please.
There, Ross.
Here, here.
White.
Here, here.
Taylor.
Yeah.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ross is willing to lead us in prayer place.
Please stand.
Uh, Mother Teresa was once asked about her prayer life and the interviewer asked, uh, when you pray, what do you say to God? And Mother Teresa, she replied, she said, "I don't talk, I simply listen." So could we bow our heads for silent prayer so that we can just listen?
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
I believe we got a special call, let's go right on into that, knock that out real quick.
From Jason Carter, City Attorney, dated Friday, August 7, 2015. Honorable members of the North Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Rock City Council at 6 o'clock PM on Monday, August 10, 2015, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-15118, a resolution accepting a low bid of and authorizing the Marion City Clerk to enter into a contract with Redstone Construction Group for the Main Street Overlay Project, 13th to 22nd Streets, incorporating funds, the sponsors Mayor Smith. O-1563, an ordinance amending the mid-year 2015 quota ordinance, ordinance number 8750, for the North Rock Public Works Department declaring emergency, the sponsors Mayor Smith. O-1564, an ordinance defining economic development consultant to be professional services under Arkansas law, declaring an emergency, sponsors Mayor Smith. Pursuant to Section 2-482 of the North Rock Municipal Code, all members were notified by email.
Thank you very much, uh, let's go ahead and call, uh, 15118.
R-15118, Mayor Smith, a resolution accepting the low bid of and authorizing the Marion City Clerk to enter into a contract with Redstone Construction Group for the Main Street Overlay Project, 13th to 22nd Streets, incorporating funds.
Move for adoption.
Begging. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Next one.
O-1563, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the mid-year 2015 quota ordinance, ordinance number 8750, for the North Rock Public Works Department, declaring emergency, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings. Begging. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
On the emergency.
One second. We need to read it now for adoption. How about a motion to the doc? So move. Begging. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
O-1564, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance defining economic development consultant to be professional services under Arkansas.
Please be advised on the second reading.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
An ordinance defining economic development consultant to be professional services under Arkansas law. Second reading.
Move to suspend the rules and place it on a third reading. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
An ordinance defining economic development consultant to be professional services under Arkansas law. Third reading, third final reading.
On the motion. On the move.
Second.
Second.
On this one, is there any cost or story range for the professional services or is this going to be a bundled type service or?
Yes, it, it, you want, you want to go over that one?
Sure, so whenever you define something to be a professional service. My phone's off. Uh, okay, that wouldn't be the record, that was not me. So, but whenever you define time to be a professional service, that's essentially the city saying, we're not going to follow a bidding process with the service that we want to do. So we advertise requests for qualification, uh, we receive responses to those requests, we rank them in order of qualifications for the best to provide those services, and then we go in order and try to negotiate a favorable contract, uh, on behalf of the city. So top, second, and third. Uh, that's normally the way that follows. So obviously, we'll have to operate within budgeted funds, you know, that will be a constraint. Uh, but then, I'd say, for the amount of money to be paid would be, uh, a matter to be negotiated with.
And would this be, this could be task specific RFQs or a bundled type RFQ for, because you, when you laid out, there was multiple, uh, ideals that you were looking for with this service.
I think, uh, when we're, when we're looking at our economic development program, you know, which we've had for quite some time, but it's been on hold based on litigation that we, you know, put a stay in place at the beginning of the year. I think it's those services that have kind of been on hold, uh, that we're looking to reengage, uh, through this process, if that answers your question.
Fine, thank you.
Ms. Ross?
Uh, if this does pass tonight, will there be any retroactive pay? Just because you said, you know, it's been on hold since January, so we have not, assuming we have not expended any funds.
No, we have not. Uh, uh, we comply with order of the court.
Exactly.
We're waiting to see what the judge says. Once we get this done, we're going to go back to the court system and go, "Your Honor, is this what you want?" Economic Development's been running off of their savings account for eight months now. So, uh, if it's, uh, agreeable from the judge, then yeah, we'll, we'll fund 2015 out of the budget that we've got for 2015.
Okay, one more question.
Sure.
And this is Mr. Carter. Now, as far as Freedom of Information Act, are all, will all of this be public knowledge, public record, or, because I point economic development, you know, there's some things that, you know, that in business do need to.
And, you know, that's a matter that was discussed a lot in litigation, is how do you manage confidential information in a public forum? Because when businesses are shopping about where they're going to relocate, where they want to put down roots, uh, they're going to buy property, they're going to spend a lot of money on it, and, uh, there's a lot of confidential information that's moving about. Uh, that's proven to be a challenge for us. Uh, Arkansas Economic Development Corporation at the state level, they have a specific FOI exemption that we don't enjoy. So that's been a challenge for us. Uh, all of our records, you know, are subject to Freedom of Information Act, uh, and it's one of the reasons why when we do economic development, we think that there's an advantage in, you know, using a third party, uh, trying to identify, you know, the documents that are, uh, that will be subject to the Freedom of Information Act, but still protect the identity to the extent that we can within the law, you know, and the information of businesses that are looking to relocate.
Mayor?
Ma'am?
Before we move forward, we may need to move back on the suspending the readings. We only had five votes, so we actually need your vote.
That's correct.
To make the two-thirds.
Mayor's vote, yes.
On the previous ordinances.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, where are we now? A wheel, third reading.
Yes, sir.
And, and Diane, I'd say on, on this particular ordinance too, whenever, whenever City Council votes to, you know, move away from the bidding process and towards an RFQ process on any service, that requires a two-thirds approval vote as well. So, uh, if this ordinance were to pass, it would require the vote of the mayor with a unanimous council.
Okay. All right, on the motion.
Ross.
Question.
So how much money do we have budgeted now, because you said, you know?
Two fifty. Two seventy-five is in the electric department's budget right now for economic development. None of those funds have been spent.
So has anything been cut back this year as far since we have it, I mean, I'm, I'm just curious if the full two seventy-five is needed, since we're practically, I mean, we're eighth month right now, so.
Uh, yes, we've cut back some on what we've been able to propose. Uh, you know, we had, Benny Keith was one of our bigger ones, uh, you know, close to 1.2 million or something like that. Uh, we think we've got most of all that covered. Uh, any, anything future, we haven't been able to promise to anybody or, so, uh, and one reason is because we didn't have it. Um, so yeah, it's just sitting. Um, we've, we've eaten up all of our operating money and have got to go into CDs to, to pay the rent and pay Todd's salary and all that good kind of stuff. So, um, Hal Matthews is a, is one of that commission, called and said, "We got to hurry up and do something." So, that's what we're doing, and we're trying to make the judge happy.
Is Mr. Carter happy though?
Yes, I mean, I think that the issues that we were facing in our litigation that we want to be confident in moving forward is our selection process, we want to make sure that we've got a good selection process that's transparent, we want to make sure that we're not sidestepping law regarding FOIA, we want to be compliant, uh, and we want to make sure that we've got a good contract that shows value for the money that we spend. And I, I think when we achieve those three hurdles, then we're going to be, we're not going to have any problem with, uh, either the court or, uh, you know, the good people across the river who, you know, wanted to cry foul, even, I think they'll be perfectly happy with the process, and, uh, and that's what we need to aspire to.
This, uh, most of this contract drawn up by Fayetteville, that's what they've been doing for the last couple of years. Uh, we think we were doing it the right way the last twenty years, uh, and still think that, but the judge didn't think, he's, he's got the authority to, so, uh, we're trying to tweak our process to meet, to make.
Ms. White?
So we'll all be, all the cities will be on a level playing field, once this is completely done, everybody will be doing it in the same way, correct?
All the cities will?
All the cities in Arkansas.
I don't know that all the cities are going to use the exact same solution that we would, and I think every community's different, and they got to find out what works best for them. I think, uh, we could see many that follow the same path that we do, but others might not. You know, it, it'll be interesting to see. I think that there's a, uh, actually a constitution amendment that's being proposed in the next election that could shake economic development as a whole. So, uh, you know, there's a lot of movement, a lot of interesting things happening right now. Uh, we're just trying to find the way ahead. I know, uh, the last, the last time I had the opportunity to speak to the chamber about it, I said, I said, "We're going to do economic development, that's important to our community, we have to do, uh, but we're going to do it with the law." And I think that's our commitment.
So is this possible amendment, are we going to be in line with that, or do we not know enough about it?
I think the amendment that's being proposed particularly tries to extend, uh, uh, we would be within the law if the amendment passes, it would actually give greater authority to contract than, than exists right now. So, so the solution that we're pursuing right now is complete, would be compliant with the law as it exists, there's actually more latitude in the amendment that's being proposed.
So would we come back and change anything within ours if that happened?
Maybe, I think we'd have to analyze it and see exactly how it shakes out.
Yeah, we're looking at 2017 on that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ross?
Can we move something up the ladder? I don't even know if this is as far as economic development with Park Hill, with their jumpstart program right now. Park Hill Elementary has that huge piece of land right now, it's up for sale, which is going to be a huge, that's going to be one of the hugest economic developments for that area. It's the, it's the diamond in Park Hill, I guess you would say, that piece of property. So, well, is this something that economic development will be working on, also bringing something into that area?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We, I mean, in economic development, in the past, uh, you usually don't do a whole lot of retail, but we realized a number of years ago that retail was very expensive, uh, very rewarding, if you would, and, so we've kind of broken off the mold of just getting manufacturers for jobs. And, well, uh, Edward's Food Giant, Leavie, one that, that Todd and Terry worked on for a long time, and, uh, you know, there's no state incentives for retail or hotels. So anything that we do to bring retail, we have to do it in-house, because we can't get others to help us.
It just is, it's probably been with thirty-three thousand cars a day passing that, that location. Yeah, I look at what Fayetteville's done with their Whole Foods, where they brought the Whole Foods in and then everything that's building up around them, and I see that in Park Hill, and that is definitely economic development. You've got Sherwood coming that way, Gravel Ridge, you've got so many pieces outside of the city that we could definitely use their tax dollars.
I agree. And I, I think we've got a little bit of a relationship with them.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That's great. What we did tonight still has to be approved by the judge, is that correct?
Uh, we won't make any final decisions on anything until we've got, had, had a chance at least to run it by the judge in the pending litigation.
So hypothetically, if we could put this in front of two different judges, we could get two different opinions, is that correct?
If we put it in front of, uh, I don't know that we would land in front of two different judges, but obviously, the answer could be yes. Uh, you could have different judges see the problem from different vantage points.
Well, Fayetteville's fact was approved by the judge.
Now, Fayetteville's hadn't been tested in this course.
Has not.
Uh, you know, Steve Clark, the former Attorney General, wrote, wrote this one, and, uh, you know, I mean, it's the only way you look at it, I mean, I've looked at it, I've tried to put my judge's cap on, and, uh, I hadn't figured out exactly, you know, where Judge Pierce is coming from, but, uh, he's a smart judge, and, uh, he's, that's what he said, so, by golly, we're going to try to fix ours.
On, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
On the emergency clause. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Unfinished business?
Okay, let's stop right there just for a second. Um, I've got a video, it's about a three-minute video that the police department put together. Um, we are, uh, being very, very successful in our police athletically, and, uh, I wanted them to give us a short video to show us some of the things that's going on, some of the things that they're doing, and I'll tell you why if we watch the video. So, let's watch the video real quick.
The North Little Rock Police Department, the PAL Board of Directors, and a host of community volunteers, work together in a public and private partnership to provide quality athletic and educational activities for at-risk children at no cost to the participants. In this way, PAL reaches across neighborhood, cultural, socioeconomic lives to form lasting relationships between our youth and positive role models in our community. The Police Athletic League is based on the conviction that young people, if they're reached early enough, can develop strong, positive attitudes towards police officers in their journey through life toward the goal of maturity and good citizenship. The PAL program brings youth under the supervision, positive influence of a law enforcement agency, expands public awareness of the role of a police officer, and the reinforcement of responsible values and attitudes instilled in young people by their parents. Studies have shown that if a young person respects a police officer on the ballfield, the gym, or classroom, the youth will likely come to respect the cause that police officers enforce. Such respect is beneficial to the youth, to the police officer, neighborhood, and the business community. The North Little Rock Police Athletic League was the first in the state of Arkansas. It began on October 1st, 1998, when roughly twenty North Little Rock officers created eleven flag football teams from young people in different areas of North Little Rock and had a competition at the Rose City Ballpark. From there, North Little Rock officers with diverse backgrounds in sports and recreational activities began working with young people from their areas. PAL went on to offer such activities as taekwondo, golf instruction, officer-led cookout, camping trips, even water skiing, community cleanup, and outreach days, baseball, softball, tackle football, cheerleading, dance instruction, kickball, and tennis. Today, PAL offers various sports utilizing three ballparks spread across North Little Rock. PAL will always strive to provide the children in our community with safe and healthy activities that will guide them toward becoming positive role models for the generations to come. PAL began with less than one hundred kids, it has grown now to serve over six hundred kids each year.
My family and I have had the opportunity to work with PAL for six years. When asked if I think the program makes a difference, I tell them that for two decades, PAL has served roughly ten thousand kids from our communities and has spent about half a million hours developing and maintaining positive relationships with the North Little Rock police officers and other role models from our communities. PAL's positive building programs help foster productive leadership.
PAL provides all equipment, all uniforms, that are necessary to play each sport at no cost to the participants. PAL is funded by contributions from local individuals and businesses in our community, fundraisers hosted by the PAL Board of Directors, and our volunteers, along with money provided by the cities of North Little Rock. There is no question that PAL has improved the lives of many kids, and as a result, greatly improved the city of North Little Rock forever.
Want to thank the police department for putting that together. Um, it gives us a sincere look at our program, and we only have one police officer that is dedicated to the Police Athletic League, and he is doing all this, and literally, that six hundred is not an exaggerated number, it is a, it's a real number, and it might even be closer to seven. Um, he's stretched too thin, the volunteers, uh, and that board have done wonderful job of keeping that together, but it needs to grow, and it can grow very easily. So probably, in this year's budget, if not even sooner, uh, I'm going to sit down with the chief and try to come up with a plan to make PAL grow, and, uh, probably it's going to cost us a little money and maybe another officer. So, um, I wanted you to see that, so you can be thinking about it, so in the next thirty, sixty days, if I come back to you, you'll kind of have a little bit of a feel of what's going on. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, I'm lining out on PAL, what is that, twenty-five thousand right now? Is it twenty-five thousand?
Uh, start me to line, I, I think so, that's about right, yeah.
And one officer.
But that doesn't count the officer.
Right. No.
Okay, now it's going to business, unfinished business.
Unfinished business, O-1538, Mayor Smith.
All right, that's the sixth and final time on the agenda, I'm going to hold that, and I'm going to ask the council to refile that for the next meeting, okay?
We're, uh, still in negotiations, so I would, I'd appreciate you to refile on this one.
Thank you very much.
O-1561, Alderman Taylor.
We're going to hold it.
New business, R-15118, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the Marion City Clerk to purchase a street right-of-way easement over certain real property located at the corner of North Main and West 22nd Streets in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R-15116, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the Marion City Clerk to execute an easement and right-of-way from the city of North Rock to Magellan Pipeline Company, LP, to allow construction and maintenance of a gasoline pipeline under a portion of Central Airport Road.
Move for adoption. Begging. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R-15117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with a Placenta County Tax Collector, certain real properties in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other new services.
Better motion. So move. Begging.
We'll call a public hearing on, uh, R-117, anyone here to speak on liens to be filed with tax collectors? Seeing none, closing the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
This concludes new business.
Run right on into public comments section, I have one, one signed up for that, James Humphrey.
Mr. Humphrey?
Good evening.
Pull that mic up, Mr. Humphrey, right there, so we can hear you. There you go.
Good evening, to the City Council of the President. My name is James Humphrey, and I represent the Hope and Needery Road Sewer Project participants. A petition signed by them, I hold in my hand. The signed petition, which I hold in my hand, requests that all the tax-paying citizens in this community have city sewer for the following reasons. Some addresses in this community have city sewer, while others do not have city sewer. The primitive sewer systems in the area are old, have deteriorated, and failed. The sewer backed up, the sewer units have caved in. Failing sewer systems pose a threat to public health, making it easy for humans to come in contact with wastewater. This constitutes violation of Arkansas Department of General Sanitation Regulations. To fix this problem beyond the scope of the citizens in this area. Again, the request is that the sewer line that's already present be extended to each household in the Hope and Needery Road community. The sewer line is needed to improve the health and environment of the citizens living in the area, and all the citizens in the North Little Rock community. The sewer line will enable each household to be able to get rid of waste in the best and safest possible. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present this request to the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey.
Mayor?
Ms. Ross?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what neighborhood that was.
Well, I believe it's southeast off of Meadow Park, backside of Meadow Park.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, I'm probably, if you said the sewer line's already there, why are they not hooked up? Can't you just pay to hook up to it?
It's not.
It's not, there's not a sewer line there? Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, we, I've met with Mr. and Ms. Humphrey, and, and I know Maurice, Mr. Taylor has too, wastewater's been involved in it, and it's, it's an extension of wastewater line, the wastewater does not go out, um, you know, if the neighborhood's developed, then the developer has to pay to extend the sewer lines. And wastewater has, has told them no, and I told them that I can make that happen, and so he's, he's lobbying you, uh, as he should, and, and so that's where we are on that.
I was just curious, because I know that there's an area in Bellwood that sell septic tanks too, right now, there are other parts of the city, so I was just curious, if there was a line there, why weren't hooked up, so.
That's what it is.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any council member have anything?
First one is, uh, I want to commend Jeff Kaplinger and Ian Hope, and Bernadette Rhodes, First one is, I want to commend Jeff Kaplinger and Ian Hope in Bernadette Roads. Recently, their efforts, they applied to the National League of Cities for a, to be selected as one of 16 cities to attend one of two conferences concerning the connection of children to nature. And Friday, we were notified that the city of North Rock was selected, and there truly is going to be accompanying Jeff and Ian to Salt Lake City in October, of which the league is paying all expenses, so it's not going to come out of our budget. I wanted to commend them for their efforts, something that, their applications as one selected on Friday. The other thing I want to bring up is, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, and if it's just me, but recently, I had a resident live over on Carey call me complaining that every time they move the vehicles in their driveway over the sidewalk to allow teenagers that live in that, in that portion of the neighborhood to play basketball on a court that's in that driveway, seems that one of our citizens drives by and calls the police and plays those out and writes a petition and so forth and so forth. And so, while I started to think, this is what I started thinking, before we put a sidewalk on the street, before we put a sidewalk on the street, houses, residences on both sides of that street can park up to four vehicles in their driveways without, being out of compliance. We put a sidewalk on one side of the street, and if the houses continue to park four vehicles in that driveway, now they're out of compliance and they're subject to getting a violation. But the people on the other side of the street can continue to park four vehicles in that driveway. So what was not illegal has become illegal because of placing a sidewalk on one side of the street. I know it's a law to park a vehicle on a sidewalk. The other thing, too, I've noticed is, is that we've approved RV vehicles to park in their driveway across the sidewalk for up to 48 or 72 hours to get ready to go on vacation or to unload after being on vacation. And it's okay for them to park across that sidewalk for 72 or 48 hours. Why is it illegal for people to park their cars? And I just, I don't know if it's just me, but I'm just wondering if we can look into this to try to work out this inequity that's happening. It happens in Lakewood, it happens in Overbrook, it happens in Summerwood, it happens in Indian Hills. It happens all over the place. Somebody's parked a car across the sidewalk, and they've lived there for a long period of time, now all of a sudden, they're getting written up for something they've been doing forever. I just wondered, we could, is it possible that, Jason, that we could look into working out some type of resolution to this?
Well, sure we can. We can.
We can do whatever we want, all right?
Well, and it's, we can do that. We've, I think, ventured off into the world of parking a few times and come back with a pretty robust ordinance, and then amended it. I think, once we, after we adopted a comprehensive ordinance, I think we've amended it eight times. And we can continue to do so, that's within the pull of the city council, that's whatever the council chooses to do. So we can change the rules. There's no such thing as a parking rule, you know, and so, and I think that's what we'll be left with, and it's just being able to circle in on the will of the council as a whole as to how to balance those public interests and private interests.
How many tickets have they got? The same person?
Same person.
Same reason?
Same reason. Called in by the same person.
Yeah, we know who that is.
Doesn't even live in that neighborhood.
Yeah, let's peddle with it. Let's peddle with it. Okay. All right, anybody else? I want to say one thing, I want to remind everyone that's home watching right now that Monday is the first day of school. And this is a very unique year for us with a whole lot of changes, a lot of people going to new schools, and the volume of some of these schools is going to be a lot larger than it has been in the past, and we might have, we will, no might, no maybe about it, we will have some traffic problems come Monday. The school district has been in charge of their own traffic design. We got involved with them last week to help them look at what they'd already designed. I don't know if we've made any changes on that, but rest assured to everyone that if whatever was designed doesn't work, then we will, we will work with the school district to try to fix it. But I encourage everyone to have patience, be careful. We're going to have a lot of kids crossing streets that they've never crossed before, and so patience, be very, very safe, and I bet in a week or two, it will, everything will get under control, and if it doesn't, our city traffic engineer, city engineer will work with the school district to make it right, so.
Ms. Ross.
One more thing, Chief Murphy, we still have burn ban, correct? In the city?
Burn ban.
Even the part, even if you have a permit, you're not allowed, correct? Okay.
Burn ban zone. Very hot. Okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
On the move.
Ross.
Yes.
White, Taylor.
Yes.
Taylor.